Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 22nd day of July 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Laufstad?
Here.
Councilwoman Martel?
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilwoman Skivoni?
Present.
All right, so we're all here. The first item is the Biggs in Blue. We're waiting on Chief Skrenicki?
Yeah, I just got several more traffic.
Oh, traffic? Surprise, surprise, right?
He's got time.
And I, we, we actually, Janice, we have a bill in, a resolution in on the Traffic Committee, right?
We do.
In the packet, all right, so we can talk about that later and get some thoughts from the Board, and we can get an update from the Chief on the blinking light program, how we're making out with that as well when he gets here. So, do you guys, while we wait for the police chief, do you want to either review the draft agenda or do some updates?
If you review the draft agenda, it would be greatly appreciated. We have a lot going on downstairs.
Okay, but we might get stuck in the middle of it.
Okay.
So...
We can try.
How far away is the chief? All right, let's do some updates then. So, I'm sorry, Cindy, but if he's about to walk in, and he is about to walk in.
There he is, okay.
Come on.
All right, good morning, Chief. Right on time.
You're early.
Well, let me guess, traffic?
You got it.
Educating, no, I was, it wasn't really a guess. I, I had intel. So, all right, so the first item on our agenda, and welcome, Chief, I know how busy you are. It's been a busy summer. First item is Biggs in Blue. It's a program between town police and Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We're joined by our police chief, Steven Skrenicki, and by Christine Scolera, Deputy Town Attorney, and also the Attorney for the Police Department. So, Chief, I'll turn it over to you, and after, when we're done with this presentation, I'd like to just be able to talk a little bit about the traffic issue as well.
Of course. You, Supervisor?
Thank you, Chief.
Want me at the podium, or?
Chief?
You can say.
Do you have one extra for the clerk?
I will have one later.
Okay.
Want me at the podium, or?
Uh, podium's fine. We need to have you amplified or recorded, so that's why we put you there.
Okay. So, what you have before you is a PowerPoint presentation, actually, that talks about Big Brothers and Sisters. It's called Big in Blue. It's a slight twist on the, or it's actually a subsidy of Big Brothers, Big Sisters program that is designed specifically for police departments and community relations. And we looked this program over. We think it's, it's very applicable to our area. We have some police officers that are interested in getting involved in the program. And if you want to go through this PowerPoint, which, I'm sorry, I'm not presenting it, but you can see, the mission statement here is to provide youth facing adversity with strong and enduring professionally-supported one-to-one relationships that changes their lives for the better and forever. Goals and objectives are to get a one-to-one mentoring program that connects youth with police and communities throughout our nation, building strong, trusting, lasting relationships. These relationships can help children develop into confident adults and help build stronger bonds between law enforcement and the families we serve. And if you look at the second page on goals and objectives, it's to match, this particular program would be to match, starting, to match 10 youth in one-to-one mentoring relationships with police officers. And you might be wondering at that point, how many officers we have interested in this. And we already have eight officers, two dispatchers, and two graduates from our civilian academy, which we would, we would look at as part of this program because they, they have a connection to the police department through the civilian academy already. So, I think it's, it's very encouraged, I'm very encouraged certainly, by the, the interest in this before we've even launched it. And I think it, it offers a lot of potential. Included in the goals and objection, objectives are to increase pro-social skills and behavior, to increase school engagement and academic efficiency, to decrease the risk of juvenile delinquency, or rates of recidivism for youth already involved in a justice system. And if you continue on down, it talks a little bit about the children. So, this program is designed for youth, both female and male, ages seven to 16. They have to reside either in Suffolk or Nassau County, I'm quite sure. Ours will probably all reside in Suffolk and preferably in this township, that need additional support from a caring adult. And the common factors that, that exist in the program, parents and caregivers engage in a partnership with Big Brothers and Big Sisters to build the biggest possible future for that child. And also, another factor here is the youth has to want to have a mentor in his or her life. Some factors that, that take place or that we look at when we select the child is children that come from a single-parent household, history of trauma or mental health diagnosis, failing in school, parental incarceration, low income, high crime neighborhoods. Essentially, we're trying to reach out to children that may not have the benefit of a solid home and, you know, good economic background. Positive impacts of the system is that this, this system and this program has shown to increase academic performance and social competency, prepares for post-secondary education to improve economic outcomes, reduces absenteeism, and engaging in risky behavior such as alcohol and drug use. And the research that's been done, this is hard research regarding the program, shows that 97% of littles, they call the children in the program, call them littles, 97% of littles stated, working hard in school is very important. This is after they're in the program, they, they come to these realizations. 95% of littles stated that going to school and getting a good education is important. 94% of littles stated that graduating from college is very important. Those children work hard, they recognize the value of education, and they set a goal of going to college, and that certainly puts them in a position more likely to succeed in life. More driven results, 46% of the littles were less likely to use drugs, 27% were less likely to use alcohol, 33% were less likely to engage in violence. And ways that people get involved through the program, a police officer, or as we're going to introduce this a little beyond the police department, the dis, well, dispatches are part of the department, but to our civilian academy graduates if they want to become one, that's a person that can be involved. You can also get involved in this program. And if, if you, if you support the program, we'll be rolling this out with abilities for people to host a Big in Blue recruitment event. People can commit to becoming a Biggs in Blue partner, or giving a site for different programs. People can participate in different agency events. And I'm, I'm quite sure that we will get from our community, people who may not take on a child, but I, I think we'll get a lot of community support for this program. I'm quite confident that I, that we can tap into people who are going to see the benefits of this program, who have the ability and the wherewithal to make contributions to the program, whether it's financial contributions, or time, or food, or properties, or, you know, a number of ways that people can support the program. So, that's, that's a quick oversight. Just to give you a little, a little more information, as most of you know, we are right now, this week, running a youth academy for the first time, a police-run youth academy. And we're running that through Remsenberg School District. They're kind enough to allow us to use a school, but the children are not all from Remsenberg. They're from different communities within the township. And today is the fourth day of that one-week program. In fact, I'm heading there right after this meeting. The, I stopped there on Tuesday. It is so well-received. The kids that are in this program are loving it. We have explorers that are, from our Explorer Program, that are assisting our police officers running that program. And a lot of the kids in the summer youth program, which is only a week, are already expressing an interest in becoming police explorers. And this kind of all ties into our robust community involvement with youth programs that I, I'm really proud of. I think that, that we're really, we've make, we made great strides in this, in that field, and I think, I think they're going to pay big dividends. The dividends for this interaction with youth are down the road, you know, you don't see them immediately, but where, I, I just heard it from the teachers and principal in Remsenberg, when I stopped there last week, she said, "You can't believe the difference just having," and our SRO program fits into this as well, she said, "The difference between kids, when a, when a police officer used to come on the property would be, 'Oh, my God, there's a police officer on a property,' and now it's, 'Oh, it's Officer so-and-so. Is he coming into our room today?" So, it's a, it's a dynamic change in the way the youth are seeing the police, feeling about police, which is all positive, especially in the climate that we're living in right now.
So, Chief, first of all, yeah, I mean, I agree that you guys are making great strides with youth, right? The School Resource Officer Program, the Youth Academy, the Explorers Program, and lots of other things that you're doing, Youth Court, and all, all these things. And I certainly agree with the laudable goals of this program. I, I was a Big Brother.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And it's, it's a great program. I also did it voluntarily. It was a tremendous amount of time, you know. We don't get to pick our parents, and there are lots of kids out there who could use some extra attention and direction. I'm also, though, concerned at the same time with a couple aspects. One, that this may be open to kids from other, outside of our taxing jurisdiction, you know. But also, I know how stressed your officers are right now, time-wise, that we have this population that seems to be soaring and placing additional demands for overtime, et cetera. And knowing how much time it takes to be a Big Brother or a Big Sister, I don't know how we could possibly take something like this on. Who is paying for this? Are they doing this in their off-hours, or are they doing this on their on-hours? And if they are, then they're obviously not available to do the other things. So, you're going to have to answer that question.
No, that's an excellent question. And, and this is 100% voluntary for police officers, and it's 100% off-duty.
Okay.
So, this, this is, and they...
Should've said that from the start.
I wanted to hold you up to that. Keep your, paying attention.
You didn't say that.
Yeah, no, this, this, this would be, this is funded by Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and any fundraising that we might do individually within the program for the Southampton Town Police Department, proportion of the program, which I'm, I'm certain we can, we can probably, as I mentioned before, I think we can get some significant sponsorship for the program.
So, the kids aren't with the officer on duty?
Oh, never, no, no.
Okay, because it could be a real distraction.
I mean, clearly, we would probably, depending on the age of the child, as we do now with explorers, and this goes up to 16, so if we have a, a youth that's 14, 15, 16 years old, as we do with, with our youth now, we, we might invite them into the precinct, show them around, you know, maybe take them on a, a ride-along or something like that. It would be all very structured the way we do with anybody right now. But the officers would not be administering this while they're on duty at all. It would take no time from their normal schedule. And I agree with you, they're, they're very overworked, and I'm, I frankly am a little pleasantly surprised that we have eight officers that are already saying, "I'd be interested in doing this."
So, they're not going to get compensated for this?
Nope.
Other than the intrinsic reward of helping a kid that needs it?
Other than the great feeling you get in the warmth of your heart, yeah, that's it.
Well, well, with that being said, it's a whole run. If they have the time to do it, and they're volunteering, and I, you know, we just, you know, I, I, we have enough kids in our community that need that extra guidance and love and support.
Yep.
And attention that, you know, I, I hope that we focus primarily on kids from our community.
Yeah, my thought would be to, my thought would be to introduce the program to find the littles, if you will, to, to recruit them, would be to go through some of the organizations in the township, like the anti-bias committee, and some of the other committees that already exist that, that kind of relate with the groups that we're looking at, to push the message out that this program exists, and see if we have any children...
I would go work directly with the schools.
We're definitely going to go through the schools.
The counselors, the, the social workers at the school. They know those kids who are not getting proper direction at home.
Well, fortunately, we have some people on the anti-bias task force who are involved in the schools.
Yeah.
And in a direct way.
We'll cover the gamut. I mean, we're, you know, and we're looking for...
Employees, I'm, I'm saying, of the schools.
Absolutely. But as you know, Councilman...
Schoolteachers, they'll, they'll know where you need to focus, I would think.
Yeah, yeah. And our, and our School Resource Officer will be, you know, very linked into this program. And that's the job of our School Resource Officer, really, is to identify those kinds of kids and start...
Kids falling through the cracks, basically.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and I don't know about now, but in the past, my daughter was a Big. They, the schools have the Big, you know, Big Brother, Big Sister program within schools.
Yeah.
So, they're already.
I mean, the reputation of the program is great. Frankly, this is new to us, and I don't, I know there's none on Long Island anyway. Biggs in Blue is new to Long Island. So, if, if you give me the green light to go ahead with this, we'll be the first police department in Long Island, I'm pretty sure, to, to initiate the program through the police department. So, another thing I'm proud of.
How much of your time this is going to take?
Pardon me?
How much of your time will this take? If we give you the go-ahead to do this, how involved are you going to be in this program?
I'm painting on whether I'm going to take a child myself on, but I probably don't have the time to do that. But I'll oversee it, you know, and I'm, I'm confident that I can find the time. This is worthwhile.
Is there a way that this could be focused to the South Fork, at least, not necessarily Southampton Town, but at least the area?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to really try to keep the focus in the township. And, and it's really going to be a matter of, do we have enough littles in the township? And I think we will. You know, I only have eight right now, eight volunteers. I'm quite sure we'll find eight littles in our township, and that'll be our primary goal.
Right. Big Brothers, Big Sisters is a well-established organization. They, they know what they're doing, and they know how to do the outreach on this. So, you know, I certainly applaud the program. Every, every child needs purpose, identity, and community, and this would...
Yeah, I mean, the twist on this, the slight twist on this, is the child, the little, is, is coupled with somebody who's in government and in law enforcement, and, you know, where you, there's plenty of Biggs out there that are great people. This is just a little bit of a, a different twist in that you're going to be with a police officer. But that, that certainly will help our police and community relations, so...
And I just, just a word of advice, having been a Big Brother, you know, some of these kids are real adverse kids. Some of these kids have history of, you know, problems in the schools. I'm sure your officers all can handle it, but they ought to know what they're getting into. And, you know, it can be a big demand on time, particularly if they're paired up with somebody who, you know, is a real challenge.
Well, the, the program, and I'm, and I'm sure most of the, most of the Biggs are going to use more time, but the program actually only calls for, you know, several hours a month. But it depends, I'm sure a person like you, and I, I know you well enough to know you don't do anything...
Halfway, yeah.
Yeah, halfway, probably well exceeded that, and some of these officers...
I just want to make sure people don't go in with this, I mean, it may turn out that they're, you know, it's, it's like, "Oh, I'm going to be a parent to this kid. I'm going to, it's great. We're going to have fun together, blah, blah, blah." Some, some of these kids are really challenging.
No, I know.
Really challenging. You know, I got paired with a, a really challenging kid, you know, almost got me into a car accident, you know. So, it's, it's, they should know what they're getting into and who they're being paired with, and we can...
You don't listen.
And not go into it sort of like, you know, "This is just going to be a fun thing." It, it can be a fun thing, but it also can be a really challenging thing.
I think, you know, as police officers, I think they recognize that. They, you know, they deal with situations where they're dealing with children like this all the time. So, I'm, I'll, I'll certainly bring that message to them and make sure they understand that. But I, I think they're probably better positioned than a lot of people in society to handle that type of child, because they handle those crisis situations every day. So, you know, another crisis to them when they're off-duty is another crisis that they're going to manage. And I, I really applaud them for even wanting to do that. But I'm quite confident they'll know how to manage it, because they're trained, and that's what they do for a living. So, they're really excellent Biggs, if you will, because they have that experience and they have that training to, to handle people that, that may have some issues like you're describing.
Yeah. Christine, I, you were...
Yeah, I was just going to add, just so you know, there is an interview process with the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, you know, the bigger corporation. They'll conduct interviews and start...
So, they'll assess both the officer in this case and the kid that they're matching?
Yes, they will speak with them. They'll interview, and they take part in the matching-up process, so that they make sure that they have a good, you know, big with a little that works.
Yeah, okay, good.
Well, I, I think it's a great, great idea. I mean, anything that we can do along those lines is a great idea. And I agree with the Supervisor, and the cost is obviously a factor, so that doesn't seem to be an issue. My one question was, how does this, is there an overlap with the Explorers, and how, how does that work? And when kids, the kids get up to that age, are, is there a pathway to, to move forward?
That's a great, great question. And there is not a definitive overlap to the Explorer Program, or better put, it's not a necessary overlap, but there certainly can be an overlap. So, the, the officers will make these children aware of the Explorer Program, introduce them to the concepts of the Explorer Program. If they're interested in the Explorer Program and they fit, they'll be welcome into the Explorer Program, for sure.
Great, great, because, you know, it's a really successful program. It just seems like a natural, a natural pathway to follow.
Right, and as you know, we, we've been, this, this just brings in another level, but we, we have so many levels of contact now that are working for us, between the Explorer Program and some of the, some of the kids in the Explorer Program come out of there, and they go to work for us once they're, you know, in their late teens, and they have a driver's license, and they become traffic control officers with the township. And some of them become part-time police officers, and some of those part-time police officers come on to be full-time police officers with us. And it just gives us a lot of, a lot of contact, a lot of good relationship building, and it gives us, when we look for our permanent police officers, we have a long history sometimes with some of these individuals, so we can really pick good individuals that are going to fit into our program, our police program. And it's been working tremendously well.
Well, between Jim Banks and...
Yeah, it's, I, I use that word sometimes. It's a farm team.
Anyone else?
Between Jim Banks and Denise Mergen, at least within the anti-bias task force, you know, you have an overwhelming force there to help find eight kids.
Excellent.
They're going to find a lot more than that, so you'll have a waiting list. I, I think it's great. I totally support it.
Christine, do we, it sounds like everybody supports it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we need to do a resolution, or?
I'm going to do a memorandum of understanding that I'm working on right now with them, so we'll have a resolution to authorize your signature on that, or the chief's signature on that, just so that'll come before the Board either at this meeting or the next...
The officers already can become Big Brothers and Big Sisters. They don't need MITA or the Town Board to say it's okay. So, it's really, basically allowing the chief to coordinate and promote the program within the department.
Correct, and, yeah.
Exactly.
It's promoting using resources.
Right.
And, you know, it will, with your blessing, we'll launch it. I, I'm not sure, you know, how much traction it will take, but I certainly think it's worth giving it a shot. And we'll report back and let you know how we do.
Okay, everybody's good?
Great.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, don't go anywhere, Chief. Because if you went anywhere, you probably hit traffic, and that's what I'd, I wanted to talk to you really briefly about. So, two things. I have a resolution in draft form before the Board to create this Traffic Solutions Task Force. And I have you and I as co-chair, and Councilman Skivoni as a liaison to the Police Department on it. We have a, a number of other individuals, some named and some named by title, like the county rep and the state rep. We don't know who those individuals will be yet. But we're going to try, you know, we're, we're getting, people are emailing us their ideas. Like, I just got one on Flanders, from Flanders, saying, "Can we put those induction loops into those side streets where we're going to try to..."
Yeah.
"...change the lights," I guess Oak Street?
Yeah, Oak and Longwood.
Oak Boulevard, or whatever, in Longwood, so that they stay green until there's a car, and then that sets up the cycle, which is, which is great. I didn't realize they didn't have those loops there. They have them in lots of other places now. So, I look forward to that. And we'll, we'll move quickly, and the resolution calls for some sort of, not necessarily a report, but a, you know, the items, the list of the proposed, or...
Action.
Action ideas, action items by the end of the year. Though, I'd like to, if there's good ones that we can implement sooner, like the blinking light idea, we should. Now, I reached out to you, as you know, recently to see if we can get, and this was largely in response to the crowd that was here on the Hampton Bays Parkland Alienation Bill, and the, it, you know, I think we were all aware of it, but it really just underscored the frustration people are having on fanning and some of the other backroads in Hampton Bays with the trade parade in the morning. That, that backlog, which is winding its way to Canoe Place Road, where there's a, a signalized intersection there. And people are trying to get around downtown Hampton Bays, because they know that it'll take forever to get through there, and then they'll make the right on the red, or when it's green. So, I, you know, I came to you and I said, "But can we get the lights blinking at Canoe Place Road? Can we get it blinking?"
Andrews.
At St. Andrews Road, which is, both of those are relatively recent lights, and they're both on the county road. And then, you know, Tuckahoe Road on 39, the Watermill Light, which is, you know, always backed up. And, and then on, you had suggested also adding the ones on State Route 24.
Twenty-four.
Either the blink or longer green. And we realized that these roads are not our roads, these signals are not our signals, and that we can't just do this on our own. The suggestion was 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM, which is awfully early in the morning, but it's amazing how much traffic there is at 5:00 AM. It's just mind-boggling, that already at 5:00 PM, it's a, it's a traffic jam. 5:00 AM, it's a traffic jam, sorry. So, have, I know you've, you've reached out about the county...
And the state.
And the state.
Yes.
So, can you tell us what you've heard, or have you heard anything?
Well, you, you just outlined the pilot with those intersections you just described, and, and as you've mentioned, some of them are county and some of them are state. I had phone call conversations with the county. I was hoping that I would hear from them. Actually, by today, I haven't. It's my plan later today to circle back with them and see if they will give us permission for the county roads. State is requiring a formal letter, which we've submitted, and we've backed that up with a request to Assemblyman Thiel to get his endorsement on the pilot, and see if he can also help to push that, that through. These are two relatively heavy lifts, unfortunately, to get the county and the state to commit to this. From experience, I know they're hesitant to do that. But we, in our conversations and in our letter, we explained the situation, as you just explained it, and the frustration that our citizenry is faced with, and, and the amount of phone calls that come into Town Board and come into my office that are non-stop this year. So, we've certainly expressed to them the situation very clearly, and we recognize that this pilot may or may not impact it, but we feel that it's worthwhile to put into place. to put into place. You had asked me to see if we could do some kind of study that would demonstrate success or failure on the pilot, which is hard to do, uh, because it's not, you know, the conditions every day change. For example, Monday of this week, for reasons I can't explain, was very light traffic. Uh, today, I'm, I just came from Hampton Bays to come here, it took me thirty, over thirty minutes. I wouldn't expect that at 10:30. Um, so you don't really know, but we've, we've put our drone up, um, every morning, as you and I discussed, at exactly the same time, and we're getting some overhead footage of the traffic each morning at exactly 7:00 AM. And, and boy, that, that footage at 7:00 AM tells the story that we're all talking about. If we get the approval for the light changes, which I'm hoping we will, uh, we'll put the same drone up in the same place at the same exact time. Um, and it's not exactly scientific, but I think it will give us an image of, uh, if it's successful, an image of traffic pattern changes, uh, and we'll at least have a good feeling that this is moving in the right direction, or not.
If you were able to get the county, can I say green light for the?
Yeah.
The yellow light? If you can get, if you can get permission from the county, um, can we at least get the Montauk Highway lights on blink?
That, absolutely. Oh, yeah, definitely. My, my thoughts are, and I know it's your thoughts as well, um, if we can get one or the other, whichever one comes first, we're gonna initiate that portion immediately. Absolutely. Every little bit helps.
Is there more that I can do to try to get the go-ahead? And, and maybe the, the related question is, is there a point where you, um, you know, because it's becoming a problem for, let's say, ambulance or police officers, where you can say, you know what, I need to blink those lights. I need to get this traffic moving so that I can clear this problem on the backroads. Is there ever a point where you can just preempt the state or county?
On a temporary basis, yes. Under a temporary emergency, yes, and we do that. But on a long-term basis, probably not. Um, I, I don't think I have the authority to do that without their permission or knowledge. Um, I'm hopeful that, uh, we're gonna get their permission, and then what you might be able to help with is contacting the county executive in Suffolk and making him aware of the situation, which I haven't gone to that point, but if the board wants to touch base with the county exec's office.
You could certainly give him a call.
Yeah. Um, again, you know, this is, this is a, a trial. I, I, as much as I think this is a worthy pilot, I, I also don't want the public to be over-expecting that this is gonna solve all the problems. Um, it might help, and if this helps, we'll look for another piece that might help. And we put enough pieces together, maybe we make a difference. I, I should also assure you, and I mean, I've had some feedback from the public about the pilot, that we will have police officers monitoring these changes if we make the changes, if we get the permission to do that. I'm not just gonna switch the lights and walk away. We'll have officers watching that intersection. Particularly up in Flanders, I say this for the people in Flanders, I know they've expressed great concern about if we, if we have 24 moving swiftly, which is what we wanna do, that they'll never be able to get out of their side streets. Um, so if we see that, we'll take action to correct that. We, I wanna assure everybody that we're not gonna just leave this unmanned. We would leave it unmanned maybe after a day or two if it's, it, it's very obvious to us in the first two days that it's not a problem, we're not gonna necessarily stay there all the time. But we will monitor to make sure it's not causing any unrelated or unexpected, uh, traffic hazards.
Should we use some digital signage too? Because sometimes I find, once you put the cop at the intersection, everybody's slowing down.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they should, but they, you know, but we want it to actually keep moving. The whole idea is to keep moving, to not come to a crawl. So, and I, I like the idea of having an officer around, but how you position the officer may matter, and if you, you know, if we put up a, a digital sign that's alerts people to, you know, uh, oh, we're in a pilot program, blinking light, I don't know how you do this, uh, proceed, not proceed with caution, but.
Well, when I, when I say I'll have an officer observe this, I agree with you, a visible officer will slow traffic down. But I can do that in a way where, unlike when we're at a scene of an accident and we have to be very visible, and it clearly slows traffic down. To have an officer observing an intersection, he can do that from a distance and not be seen by traffic there. So I, I think we can manage that in a way that it's not gonna negative.
And where they put, put the car.
Yeah. And what car they're in. And they don't necessarily have to be in a marked car to, to do this. So we'll find a way.
They can park on the side street.
Yeah.
Under state law, blinking light will slow traffic down. I mean, it's, well, I'm not telling you the law, but, you know, that we're supposed to slow down when you see a blinking flash.
Correct, but not as much as a red light.
Exactly. It doesn't stop it, but it slows it, so.
Right.
Right, so like a roundabout does slow traffic down, but it keeps it flowing. And I think that's the key, is to keep it moving, because once they stop, and a lot of it's heavy equipment, like big trucks, you know, you have to, there's the reaction time, okay, it's green now, and now you have to start moving one by one. Each car has to get into motion, and by the time everybody's in motion, it goes red and they have to stop again.
And there's, there's a lot of studies done on that, particularly with heavy trucks, and the time it takes a truck to get back to momentum of even thirty or forty miles an hour.
Tom Neely has a simulation of that, and everybody should take a look at it, it's very interesting.
Yeah, it, it, there is a lot of time to get back up to, to thirty to forty miles an hour, so.
So chief, the main goal here is to, to make the highways, the highway, 27 and 39, more attractive for commercial drivers and, and traffic in general. So perhaps if, if this does happen and the county and the state go along, we should probably put a sign out on 27 to let people know, to let commuters know, and the trade parade know, that this is going to be the case in the next couple of weeks.
Right.
And hopefully, they will stay on the highway rather than going into the back.
Exactly. But, and I think, you know, with, if we're successful and that traffic continues to move better, the Waze apps and the, all those apps are going to advise motorists that stay here, because it is moving. So, you know.
Could we use signage to say, please stay on the main road?
I don't know that people.
Or, you know, an idea Tommy John's been promoting too, is, you know, can we actually prohibit some of the commercial traffic on the back, on the neighborhood roads?
There's a problem with that, and that is, we already have prohibitions to a lot of commercial traffic on backroads, and our police force is so tied up and so thinly spread right now, uh, it's hard for us to enforce some of them that are in place now. So, uh, unless we have major issues with commercial on backroads, I wouldn't recommend more restrictions than we have unless there's a real good reason.
I think the best thing is to get the main roads flowing.
Yeah.
Then there's no need, they won't go to.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to say. If, if the main road is going, you won't need any sign to say, stay on it.
Have you thought about a no right on red at Canoe Place? I mean, it'll back up like crazy, but then maybe nobody'll go that way because they know it's, they're gonna be better off staying on the main road.
Haven't thought of that. That's, that is an interesting idea that would hurt the residents a bit, and I don't know how they would appreciate that. It was certain.
Part of the problem is.
We could do it at a certain time of day, no right on red, uh, early in the morning.
I mean, part of the problem is, at least, and, and you probably would observe this, is when they're making those constant right on reds, they're actually slowing down the traffic on the main road. The main road has the green.
Yeah.
And, but they have to slow down to let these people in. It's just one lane over there.
They nose in there.
Yeah, they nose in there, and it's a merge point.
Yeah.
And so at least while it's green, more cars would get through.
If you did, if you did that and prohibited the right on red, even if it was, like I said, I, if we were gonna do it, I would so.
In the morning.
Only do it in the morning, right. Um, you would then eliminate that one, that one bypass route. You would probably produce another bypass route. Where that would be, I'm not sure.
Might cut through the restaurant there.
So if we were to do any of this, is there a way to somehow inform Waze or some of this other artificial intelligence of these changes immediately? I know it's a new technology, but, you know, perhaps we could use the technology to our advantage if we were to put a no right on red to inform them immediately that this is the case, or the blinking light program, and maybe they'll change their algorithms.
I don't know that you can do that, I could explore that, but I know that their, their messaging is based on real-time information. So regardless of what your message might be, they're, they make their money and they're successful on, based on their real-time information to drivers. And, and that's based on reporting back to, to the company, and some of that's done automated by cellphones that they track, and some of it's done by people calling in and actually letting them know, but most of it now is automated. They, they, you know, your phone is telling them where you are and how well you are moving. So I, I really think at the end of the day, if, if this program is going to work, it, the message will get there, what, almost automatically. By the same token, if it fails, that message will be there as well.
And this idea of five to seven, it sort of sends a message to all the contractors. If you wanna get through.
Yes.
This is the time to go through.
Definitely, if, if we see some improvement.
If you wait till after seven, you'd expect the less.
So I, I had a question about that, and, you know, I'm, I'm just an, not a, I'm an engineer, not a traffic engineer, but.
No, I'm not.
What I, what I observe is quite often, I remember when I was learning how to drive, the big message was slower traffic, stay to the left, faster traffic, get in the right, you know, right-hand lane. That never seems to happen anymore on 27 and 39. Um, I was wondering, is there a, a way to look at that mix, that traffic mix, and restrict commercial traffic to certain portions of side of the, of the particular roads in question at, at certain times, as opposed to allow car traffic to move, which tends to sort of group up on one side all the time, and then you have trucks coming in and out that just slow everything down, and people get trapped. Uh, so you see those clusters of.
That's an interesting, another interesting point. I mean, on the LIE, for example, commercial traffic is not permitted in a left lane.
Right.
Um, but, so, you know, you could look at that, um, on, on County Road 39 and on parts of Sunrise Highway, where when it goes down to two lanes, there's no restriction, a commercial vehicle can be in either lane. That would be a county conversation to have with the county since it's a county road. But that's, that's an interesting thought, to restrict commercial vehicles to the right lane only in those locations. And I, as you know, some parts of County Road, particularly if you're going west, there's only one lane, so it's not gonna be applicable there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I would not expect that that would have a, a, a big effect, but again, as we've, keep saying, none of these things are gonna have a big effect. It's a matter of, uh, making a lot of little changes that collectively may make some impact. Um, I'll keep that, that thought. These are two good, interesting thoughts, that the no right on canoe in the morning, and we can certainly have some conversation, particularly if the, if we have more conversation with the county about the change in the light structure, we can talk to them a little bit about the lanes and commercial use of lanes. But I, I, actually, the, the no right on red in the morning for canoe might be an interesting thing to, to, to try out. And we could, we could do that in a number of ways.
Test it, see what happens.
Yeah. Is there any way to limit it to?
No. I know where you're going.
Local zone.
Only because I've already had somebody come and say.
I, I, I said the residents are gonna be unhappy, but I can't.
They're gonna have to go up, because they can't go on gravel hill, they have to go.
I, I know, I know, I know. But I don't think there's a lot of residents in between 5:00 and 7:00 AM. I mean, we, we'd have to, yeah, I, I.
Understood, we gotta try something.
I, I totally, and my first thought is, that's gonna be a residential complaint immediately, and unfortunately, I can't.
I've thought about that too.
Can't stick to the cars and say, okay, you're a resident, go ahead.
The only way that works is, the only way that works is if it's really just pushing all that traffic back to Montauk Highway, and so, you know, you don't, right now, there's a tremendous backlog on Canoe Place.
And it's not just Canoe Place, it comes up, then it comes Newtown Road, it comes.
Newtown and they bang a Uwe, that's another issue.
Yeah, that, that.
It doesn't help either.
You know, right, I know the fear is that if you put no right on red, it's actually gonna be a worse backlog, and that may be the case, in which case it's a terrible idea.
We need a road re-ear.
But it might have the reverse effect. If everybody knows that, they stay on the main highway, they don't take the backroads. But we won't, we don't know, it's, it's, might be worth looking at. We really need to, I think, better understand how those rights on reds are impacting the main flow of traffic. That's the key. If they really are slowing down the traffic at that intersection, then we've got a problem.
Well, I would certainly recommend that we take it one step at a time, so we can see with each step the value or, or, or no value in each step as we make those steps.
Right.
So we, you know, right now, it's, my recommendation would be, stay with the lights.
As a scientist, it's good to, you change one variable at a time.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you don't know.
Exactly.
What caused the result.
Yeah, so we, we have a, you know, if we get the approval for these light changes, that'll be an interesting study. Let's look at that for a week or so and see what happens.
The chief on Flanders Road by Long Neck Boulevard, we're gonna have that light, it's gonna be blinking.
Yes.
So anybody making a left is either gonna sit there for an extended period of time or have to go and want to make a U turn.
Negotiate, yeah, find an opening.
Yeah.
And, and if we find, and I, I do predict that finding an opening might be difficult, and that's why I'd have to have an officer look at that. And if it's too hard to find that opening, then we have to do something to change the timing rather than just keep it flashing all the time. So, you know, we, we really need to make the change, we really need to observe what that change is, how that change is gonna affect the, the lesser roads, the backroads. Obviously, these things are, are done to improve the main road traffic, and I'm pretty confident it will. The, the question will be, what would be the adverse effect on the backroads, which has potential, and, and clearly the residents are concerned about it. I hear their voices loud and clear, so if you're watching this right now, we hear it, we'll watch it, we, we won't leave you hanging, we promise.
There are a couple of places, chiefs, where driveways act as cut-throughs, and one is right at the intersection that we're talking about, so.
Driveways?
Uh-huh, at Canoe Place.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And Montauk Highway, and.
It's like commercial.
Do they chain that in the morning? They, I mean, because I know cars who will cut through, and, uh, you know, the residents know about this, but then, you know, people who are traveling through, they see it and they learn, and, you know, and then that becomes a cut-through.
Like, you're talking about parking lots, basically?
Yeah. Yeah, driveways, parking lots that go behind a building, you know, they're, these are bailout situations for, you know.
And, well, you know, when, when everything is backed up, every crack gets exposed.
Exactly.
And people find those little cracks, and it's just.
It's illegal, isn't it? It's against the law to do that.
It's against the law to avoid a traffic signal light.
Yeah.
By cutting a corner, going through a gas station to avoid a traffic signal light. That's.
I know that for a fact.
I'm not gonna ask you how, Councilman.
My younger days.
Beyond the statute of limitations.
Okay.
You mean, you were just driving through to check the gas price, and you saw it was too high, so you can.
I think it was an attempt to check the law.
So, all right, um, well, yeah, I, I'll reach out to the county executive if that helps, if you.
Yeah, I think that would.
And make sure he understands the urgency and that you've made the formal request to, what, to DPW?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, um, and the state, you've reached out to Assemblyman Thiel already.
Yes.
Um, I've spoken to him as well on this, so, um, he's, I, I know, gonna try to help us with the state DOT, and, um, let's hope we get permission to give this a, a try.
Keep our fingers crossed that we get the permission, and then keep our fingers crossed that it makes a difference.
Well, you know, the cone program on County Road 39 started out as a pilot program, right? Um, and I got permission to try it for one week, and it was, uh, it worked so well.
Right.
That after a week, this was, uh, County Executive Levy was in office at the time. After, after one, one week, our phones just were ringing off the hook, with people saying, you gotta, you gotta keep it going, you gotta put the cones back. you gotta, you gotta keep it going, you gotta put the cones back. And this was like, it started out, I think, what, what is that, March, April, we, we tested it, we did the one-week pilot program, and it ended up setting the cones up all the way till Thanksgiving that year, and then we built the extra lane.
Yeah, and changed the road.
Couldn't afford to keep doing the cones, but we knew that that extra lane made a fundamental difference, and it, it's funny, somebody, I always had a, a meeting the other day, and somebody said, oh, the extra lane didn't, you know, so the traffic is still backed up, the extra lane obviously didn't help. And I was like, can you, can you imagine today without that extra lane?
No.
You know, oh, it helped, 39 actually flows pretty well, it's actually Sunrise Highway that seems to be backed up, but, um, 39 without that lane would be unlivable.
Absolutely.
At this point, so, uh, it definitely worked. And if for many, many years, we didn't see the, you know, the big back, the giant backup even on, on 27, and now it's come back.
There's clearly more traffic.
Yeah. And we don't have the train in the morning, which would help. We're still hopeful, we'll, we'll see the train resume. It got suspended because of COVID, and, uh, it was growing in ridership.
Right.
And, uh, you know, you know, I appreciate, uh, Assemblyman Thiel and his leadership on that issue, and, um, forceful voice for reinstituting the train, and I, I hope we see it come back. We're ready, we're ready if it does. And, uh, you know, one of the ideas I've been kicking around is, if we do get the train, and hopefully, more frequency of trains, because the Long Island Railroad's considering, uh, building some parallel track sections, like spurs, so that, because right now, you have one set of tracks, you gotta send the train from Spion to Montauk, wait for it to get all the way back to Spion before you can send another train. If you had places where you could pull the empty train over and let the populated train go by, they could do a lot more trainings.
Unquestioned.
So, um, but one idea that I've, um, been kicking around, and I think Councilman Lobstat actually sort of threw this idea out initially, was to, because a lot of the workforce will not take the train, because they need their, you know, they, they need their tools, they, they need their circular saws, they need their whatever, you know, equipment, uh, table saws, landscaping equipment, whatever it is. What if we had a, a lot that maybe secured with a fence and video cameras, somewhere pretty far east, maybe Bridge Hampton or Wayne Scott, um, and the workers then could get on the train, reliably get to East Hampton in like a half an hour, thirty, forty-five minutes, rather than two hours sitting in traffic, and then we could shuttle them to the lot, you know, using our commuter connection, and then they could get in their equipment, work all day on the east end, park it, take the shuttle back to the train, and get back. It would save them so much time, and you know the expression, time is money.
Sure.
You know, it's several hours of their day not sitting in traffic, so, um, it, it could be a home run, I, I don't, it's worth exploring, and, you know, that maybe will come out of this, um, committee that we're, this task force, but, uh, um, there's a lot of people talking about roundabouts, and where roundabouts could go. There's a resident of Watermill who's, you know, giving me drawings about where, how you can eliminate the Watermill light with two roundabouts, one east and one west of You know, there's a lot of ideas out there.
Jay, one idea that I was interested in, in terms of the trade parade and the workers that, that are coming in and out, I noticed that, um, many of the jobs, uh, many of the construction jobs require that their workers take their private cars to the job site. And you see, and you've seen this, chief, you see 30 cars, 15 cars, at a particular job site, and they begin paying them when they get on the job. You know, when I was in construction, we used to report to the, to the shop, to the, you know, headquarters, whatever, get in the trucks, and then go to the job, and that seems to have changed with, uh, many companies, and I always thought that that possibly could be a way for us to, uh, eliminate traffic, or eliminate, reduce traffic in some small way, by requiring, somehow requiring, that workers be brought to the site, rather than drive to the site. It's better to have one truck go to the site, rather than seven.
No question about that, I mean.
And then there were parking issues in the area, too.
Yeah, you would regulate that, I, I'm not sure, but certainly, the practice of ride-sharing would reduce traffic.
Mm-hmm.
The encouragement to do that certainly is worthy.
Right.
You know, chief, one thing that I've talked to you about a number of times, and hopefully, I know how busy you are, um, hopefully, we're making some progress. We, we have two main arteries, right? We have County Road 39 and Montauk Highway, there's really only two crossings of the Shinnecock Canal. Like, you know, County Road 39 is a complicated road, um, because it's the main thoroughfare, but it, you know, it also has a lot of commercial businesses on it, and even though we have tried to sort of keep the businesses, low-traffic generating businesses, we've had a number of fatalities and accidents on County Road 39, and when there is, we end up having to shut down a section, particularly if it's a fatality, we're waiting for the medical examiner to get here, um, medical examiner stuck in the same traffic, um, suddenly, you know, Hill Street, Montauk Highway, everything comes to like a tremendous stop. And we don't really have a good routing plan for that traffic, and some of it is because there's no way to route the traffic, because there aren't fire roads or connector roads, there's no way, nothing that you can open up to let the traffic bypass even slow, so people will call me, like, I was in, I sat there for four hours, waiting for this accident to clear. That's not really acceptable, and I, I don't know what to tell them. So, a, a while back, I, I reached out to you, I said, can we come up with like a series of places where maybe we can construct, you know, gravel roads, or dirt roads, or, or other connectors, so that we have a rerouting plan for these areas where we know that we've had their, their accident problem, um, so that we don't end up with that four-hour situation? And of course, we've talked about maybe having the M E have somebody, you know, closer, somebody be delegated.
And it's not just the M E, sometimes it's our tow trucks that, that take a long time to get there to move a car, um, but, a, as you know, we have, that, that is a, it's, it's a great plan, and, and we're working on it, and we already have looked at and identified some areas, such as that, that breakthrough that might come out at Hill Station Road, which would certainly help, um, and there are a few other places that we're looking at to see if we can do that. None of these things are easy to do, if they were easy to do, they'd be done already. So, I mean, the public has to understand that these are, we're really up against a, a, a very big challenge to define alternative roads, to do the things that we're talking about, um, but that's not dissuading us from every little nuance that we can make to try and improve things, but on that project, um, we have identified a few, we've, I've been on Zoom calls with you and the county, talking about one facet of that, that is one of the easier ones, frankly, um, but we're looking at a couple of others that might open up some bypasses to the main arteries when we do have to shut it down, and I, I'm keenly aware, and I've been in traffic myself, uh, how frustrating it is to sit behind an accident scene for a long period of time. Sadly, you know, some of these accidents are very serious, and there are a lot of details that have to go into that investigation, and more importantly, or as importantly, in reconstructing that accident, because there are mammoth lawsuits that follow that, uh, and those lawsuits rely on the police documentation of that occurrence, um, and there's millions of dollars at stake, and I, I know how frustrating it is for somebody to sit there, but if you were the victim, or a family member was a victim, um, and it was somebody else's fault, you would certainly want us to take the time to document that the right way.
We'll understand that, particularly when there's a fatality, you know.
Or serious.
But I think we do have to do our job in trying to find.
Well, the key is, as you said, the key is, we may not be able to change the timeframe that we're on scene, the key is, can we find a way to get around that? Um, and, and I do think there's some merits to trying to find.
Well, I have this like concept that there'd be some plan somewhere that says, if there is a accident in this location, this is the rerouting plan.
Right.
And this is where we need to station officers, these are, this is the road that we open up through the woods, that allows, you know, that kind of thing, here's what we do if the accident's here.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
If we can get the roads to support that, to implement those things would be easy. Getting the roads structured to support that is the difficult part, but once we get the roads structured to do that, it's very easy for us to signal those, those changes in traffic patterns, and for us to redirect the traffic, that's not, that, that would be the easy part of that. The harder part is establishing those alternate routes. But we're working on it, we're not, we're not giving, we're not throwing our hands up, that's for sure.
No, I appreciate it, I am glad you're there, because I know that'll get done. Anything else? You know, it's, it's interesting, we moved this meeting to 11, normally, these meetings start, it used to start at 10 o'clock, and now it's just one little minor change to help some of the board members who, and public, who are west of the canal.
Right.
Because that one-hour difference cut their commute time by about 30 minutes.
Yeah, I'm sure, I ran to it, even, even at the 11 o'clock start, I ran to it.
We're all doing what we can, we're all doing what we can.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe a combination of small things will lead to a big difference. That's the hope.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love the Big Brothers program.
I, I gave a top copy, but not the, maybe, you know.
I'll take it if you have.
Here, I gave, there's two of them, they look alike.
All right.
Cam, I think Sunday took the top one already.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we're gonna take a look at the agenda for the upcoming meeting, this will be Tuesday, the 27th of July, um, it will be here at Town Hall, and it will start at 6:00 P. M., so it's an evening meeting, and, um, we have just one public hearing, it's on the use of additional special supplementary community development block grant COVID funds to be awarded to the town of Southampton through the Suffolk County Consortium, and then we get to resolutions. So we'll just read these, if anybody has any questions, uh, you let us know. Uh, 37020, authorizes supervisor to sign a right-of-entry agreement with P S A G for the planning of P S A G's Bridge Hampton to Buell underground cable project.
Town Board Resolution 37040, authorize the parks director to enter into interim agreements for mobile food concessions pursuant to Town Code 111 dash 7B for 2021 summer season at Hot Dog Beach.
37045, authorize the purchase of one Chevy Tahoe from New York State O G S contract with Chevrolet of Smithtown.
I D 37046, authorize the supervisor to execute a lease agreement with Auto Chlor System for dishwashing machine.
Before you, we go on to the next one, so I have a note that that resolution will need to get amended.
37046?
Yeah, so there's, the amounts are incorrect, so, uh, where, where it says further resolved, um, on the next page, contract line not to exceed, it should say $2,036 in 2021.
$2,036.
$2,036, and then again, uh, in the financial impact, the 1,500 goes to $2,036.
Thank you.
Cam, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, Town Board I D 37027, authorize the supervisor to execute amendments to interpret a contract for justice court.
37037, authorize the supervisor to sign consultant agreement with Thomas Neely, doing business as T F N Advisors, uh, let me just explain this one real quickly, um, so, Tom, recently retired, as you know, we have not backfilled that position, we have nobody doing the work that Tom had been doing, and, um, as you know, he was, uh, very involved with the South Fork commuter connection, which I'm hoping is gonna return, and we'll have to, um, notify the public and get the schedules out, and get the, the shuttle buses running again, um, but besides that, all the, uh, you know, the stop signs, no parking signs, all these changes that, uh, we don't have anybody on, so this would be as we need him, um, we can bring him in at a rate, um, I think of $75 an hour, uh, with a maximum amount of $20,000. I know this is something that's, that's needed, and he has sort of a very specialized knowledge, so, uh, just want to make sure everybody's okay with this.
Okay, that's $20,000 for the rest of this year?
Yes. Yes, so a, as a retiree, he can't, I think he's limited to $30,000 for a year. But, um, our goal, I, I have to talk to Chris Fenton about what her long-term plans are, in terms of how she's going to fill this function, um, because it, it's becoming a problem, I, I, you know, for a lot of us, that we don't have anybody doing this work, and, uh, whether she wants to bring in another engineer, or whether, uh, you know, keep somebody on like Tom as a, as a consultant, or use other consultants, I, I don't know what the best approach is, but, uh, Tom's willing to do this, and he's certainly, uh, very skilled at it, so, um, that's why I'm bringing this forward. Julie, you're next.
I D 37050, recalling amend Town Board Resolution 2020 dash 1090. I D 37048.
Um, sorry, could we go back? There's, um, conflict in the year for that resolution, do we know if it's 2020? Well, I think it has to be 2020, because we're not up to 1090.
Uh, which one?
Yeah, the one I just read.
Yeah.
I see that.
So should I change those to 2020?
I'm not sure if it's 2020 or 2021, so I'll check and find out.
Well, I know 2021, we're not up to 1,090.
There's a conflict between the title and the first whereas.
Yeah.
Um, let me just see if I can remember now.
And a resolved, and a further resolved.
Authorize to execute 2021 youth bureau agreements, no, this has, it, the title is wrong.
Okay, so it should be 2021.
It should be 2021, yeah. Yeah, because, because.
It can't be.
I was saying it can't.
It can't be.
We're not at 1090 yet.
Oh, we're not, okay, that was, yeah, that was my question, so I would, I can check it.
Yeah.
Just to confirm.
What do you mean, we're not?
We haven't gotten, gone past Resolution 1090 yet, so it can't be, we can't be amending it if we haven't gotten to it. What resolution number we have to?
780 something.
Okay, so, yeah, so that can't.
So you think the 2020 is correct, but.
I do.
But that one doesn't make sense either, because the youth bureau agreements for 2020 would have already been paid.
I will check, because I do not know.
Appreciate it.
Unless it was a multi-year contract with Rodney Rollins.
Well, she's gonna check it.
Thanks, John.
All right, so let's come back to that, when we, when we've got that sorted out, it, it's possible that he was hired in 2020.
Right, okay.
On a multi-year arrangement.
Paula, can you check that? Thank you. Okay, uh, I D 37048, recalling amend Town Board Resolution 2021 dash 245 to reduce the total local match funding amount for the purchase of two buses for the senior shuttle program.
Town Board I D 37043, 2021 notice bidders for Shinnecock Maritime Park.
Let's stop for a second, so I don't understand what we're bidding out. Does it say, does it, you have to look at the notice to bidders.
I think we sent it out to bid once before, and the bids were way too high.
Hmm, so this is the parking lot improvement?
Right.
Maybe the pavilion, I think, so we're just re, rebidding it?
Yes.
Okay, um, 37031, 2020 fund balance allocations for capital borrowing as relates to debt reduction policy. So this is basically from last year, the fund balance came in higher than anticipated by $3.3 million, um, so we're trying, I guess, to apply that to offset future borrowing, and then the balance, um, could go to, you know, other priorities, so. So it looks like 1.9 million from the balance, uh, 691,000 from Highway 565.9 from the Water District, 135 from Waste Management, will, will go to next year's capital program, so that we don't have to borrow as much. So it, it was tricky this year, because we did the borrowing so early that we weren't able to apply it, so what Len is trying to do then is to encumber the money and say, this will be used for next year's capital. All right, um, next resolution, 37035, accepts donation from Tudor First Management New York, Inc., for the Southampton Town Police Department to amend the 2021 adopted budget, um, funding a luncheon for the Southampton Town Police Youth Camp. 37036, amends the 2021 budget for various departments. 37044, amends the 21 through 25. 37044 amends the 21 through 25 capital budget for the Town Hall improvements. 37025 appoints Labor Management Committee for 2021. And from, you know, our team will include myself, Frank Supone, Sandra Cercione, and Juan Becerra. 37024 appoints Michael Carrier, Chair of the Architectural Review Board for 2021. 37049, co-sponsor of Councilman Skivoni establishes a Traffic Solutions Task Force and appoints task force members. Before we move on past this, I just, you know, we've listed a number of people. I'm concerned if we get too big with the committee. I'm certainly open to suggestions, but myself and Chief Skrenicki as co-chairs, Councilman Skivoni, the Highway Superintendent, Superintendent Gregor, or if he wants to designate somebody, Ryan Murphy as our Public Safety Director, Tom Horton from the Engineering Department, somebody from New York State Highway or DOT, somebody from County DPW, Thomas Neely, assuming he's chosen as a transportation consultant to serve on this, Tony Filarimo, who's the Chair of our Town Transportation Committee. And then I put one public rep, you know, to be designated, one, one east of the canal and one west of the canal. And, you know, we will also hold some sort of public meeting to solicit input because some of the best ideas are coming out of the public, as I mentioned, with some of the roundabout ideas. So, but is there anything glaringly wrong with this that, does anybody want to feel that I've omitted a critical voice in this task force?
Tony is from Hampton Bay, Tony Filarimo is from Hampton Bay, so I think that's appropriate as well.
Oh, good.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, and we could also add at a later date too. We could, it could be like a living document, it could, it could change as we go. Okay, I'll move on. 35271 authorize additional funds, oh, I want to discuss this. Authorize additional funds for Be Ready, Fishbine, Hatter, and Donovan LLP to represent the interests of the Highway Superintendent as it relates to St. Andrews Road. And I'm forwarding this resolution because I have been asked to. I don't support it. Jim, I don't know what to do here because I've reviewed every shred of information and documentation that the Highway Superintendent is using to support this claim. There isn't, I, you know, I can't see anything that justifies that that section of this driveway through, you know, Shinnecock Hills Golf Course is a town road. And we're spending, this is $35,000 in taxpayer funds. I have looked at the initial resolution back in the 30s in directing the Highway Superintendent to file the certificate of abandonment. I've looked at the map that was attached to it that says that that section was to be abandoned. I do not understand the basis of the claim and, you know, I'm told, ah, well, we have to, he's a separately elected official, but he's wasting taxpayer money on a frivolous suit. And I don't know what to do here.
Yeah.
I'm turning to you and saying, at some point, any objective review of the documentation says it's not ours, it was traded so they could build County Road 39. If, and if you're untrading it, now County Road 39 isn't ours either, so.
I mean, I completely agree with you, Mrs. Dastanis, in my point after, you know, quite, looking into this.
It's great for, it's great for the law firm, another $35,000 because, you know, on a wild goose chase.
Looking into this myself and, you know, as I, as I've said, as I've mentioned, I've met, I had met a number of times with the Suffolk County Department of Public Works prior to the, to them able to produce the map that really seems to clarify the issues. I met with a number of the people from Suffolk County Department of Public Works on that issue. Once we had the map, it really does, to me and to you and to others, seem to clarify the issue. And I also met with the State Department of Transportation on this. And when I met with the people I, I know from there, from my days with the Turner General's office, they even, it seemed to even be clearer to me. The status of litigation at this point is that the club has made a motion to dismiss and I believe all papers are in at this point. So we're now waiting for a decision from the courts. I've had numerous conversations with Peter B. from, from Be Ready. I've had conversations with the Highway Superintendent as well on this issue.
Does he?
Speaking with Peter B.'s firm, they feel that there are some issues. I think, as I've always said.
I haven't heard a single one.
Bring it to a logical conclusion, like you had mentioned, if in some magical way that the, the agreement from 1932 did not encompass what is being referred to as St. Andrews East, you know, the portion of St. Andrews Road that was east of Tocco. If by some way, somebody, if the courts were to conclude that that was not part of the swap, like you mentioned, I think it could, there could be a concern that that portion east, that portion of County Road 39, east of Tocco, could be in jeopardy as a public road, so.
Can we just like go over like the salient facts on this, right? So the county wanted to build County Road 39. It was right smack through the middle of two fairways of the original Shinnecock Hills Golf Course.
As far as that.
We had a road, St. Andrews Road, that went up to Tocco Road. The county needed land of the, from Shinnecock Hills Golf Course, the entire golf course had to be shifted up to the north, right? A trade was made for that portion of St. Andrews Road, parallel to County Road 39. Now they had no way of finishing St. Andrews Road, so they actually agreed to build that loop that we know today goes, you know, under the sunrise and, under 39 and then loops back around. They wouldn't need to build that loop if they still had a road that reached Tocco. It would have been completely unnecessary. Why spend all that money to build that road? There's a map that says to be abandoned on both sections, both east and west of Tocco Road, clearly marked, no question about it. There's a description of square footage that is being transferred. It matches those two sections of road. So where, and there's a direction of the Highway Superintendent back in this from the 1930s, directing him to file the certificate of abandonment, which he fails to do for either section of that road. So where, what is the confusion here? You said there might be something, there might be something. What is that something? Because I have not heard anything, the facts are as clear as day here. And look, if there was something there, I 100% support it. If it's ours, great. But if it was traded in good faith so that we could build County Road 39 and they had to completely reposition the golf course to do this, then we're acting in bad faith at this point. And we're throwing away tax dollars.
Again.
And does the Highway Superintendent get to do that?
Originally, you know, did the Highway Superintendent have the, you know, the authority or the position to, to bring this action, you know? And at that time, it was, if we were going to fight that part of it, we'd have to fund both his lawsuit and we'd have to fund outside counsel, because my office would be conflicted. And so we decided to let him proceed on this. I, again, I said a hopeful.
It was originally like $12,000. Now it's.
Right.
An additional $35,000.
Right, no, I agree. I think, you know.
So can I, can I ask a question here?
And without showing me one shred of evidence that there's a basis to the claim.
I would say, and I don't want to necessarily, if it's litigation, I don't want to say too much about this, but on public record, but I think, I believe the position of.
Well, I was, I wanted to allude to a little bit in that regard.
Just, just, I mean, the position from what I, you know, my earlier discussions a number of years ago with the Highway Superintendent and with the consultants, the Highway Superintendent's consultants, the engineering consultants, it wasn't at that time the legal consultants. There, I believe the Highway Superintendent's position was, reading the resolutions and the way it was described, he felt that the swaps involved only roads that were west of Tocco and did not involve the road as we mentioned referred to as St. Andrews.
Have you seen that written anywhere? It says just west of Tocco? Because I haven't.
The resolution, yeah, I said the 1932 resolution itself, yeah.
It says, it says all portions of.
Right, right. Yeah, it's not the, at the time.
What's the 30?
It's 1932. I think nowadays, it might have been, you know, more clearly stated, but, no, it's, it's always been my position that it involved both sides. I mean, if you bring it out to logical conclusion. And then, again, the county was not be able, we did not have the map that you referred to, Mrs. Supervisor.
No, and I understand the original confusion. I understand the original confusion, but once that map was produced by the county.
I don't, I don't disagree.
That should have been the end of it.
Right.
In my mind.
So my question, Jim, was, well, we probably went over that area already. My question was, what's in front of the board right now is a decision to spend $35,000.
Right.
And yet, I'm understanding.
Funds have already.
Well, I'm understanding that this is still in court and we're awaiting a decision.
Right.
So what are we actually spending this for?
Well, it's because of the billing.
Is it to retain the lawyer?
They have done, they, the, the firm, this firm that represents the Highway Superintendent has, has billed this amount already in, from their, preparing for filing complaints and now, you know, doing their own research, yeah, doing their own research, filing complaints and now responding to the motion to dismiss. So this is their litigation.
It's work they've done.
Yes, work they've done.
So my follow-up question to that.
And they have done a lot of times. I mean, I've had discussions with Peter B. and I've asked him to sharpen his pencil as far as the billing and, and he understands that. And I think maybe there will be some further discussions. I'm hoping that the decision on the motion dismissed will be, come relatively soon and that it'll be.
So is there an urgency?
If it comes the way we think it might come.
Is there an urgency for us to pay this, this right now? I mean, I'm trying to decide if this board, maybe just tell me what happens. If this board votes no.